So is there anyone in the room who would like to answer that question from the medical profession?
I can give you a little information.
Are you representing for the medical profession?
Yes, I'm the immediate past president of the Maine Medical Association.
Could you please come forward and introduce yourself?
Good morning, Chairman Cornfield and Senator.
Over here.
Sorry, Senator Miller.
Your name, please?
I'm Dr. Charles Padavina. I'm an emergency physician in Bangor and I'm employed by St. Joseph Hospital. As I mentioned, I'm the immediate past president of the Maine Medical Association.
Thank you.
But I didn't actually come here to testify today. I came to hear your all hearing and deciding.
And to be very clear, you're not testifying. We're just hoping to get an answer to Representative Rudnicki's question.
Right. So I can tell you that at least as far as influenza goes, if an employee or a medical staff member declines to get an influenza vaccine, they're just required to wear a mask. They're not, there's no adverse action taken against that person.
Representative Rudnicki?
But what about something like, I guess, there was a exemption, significant exemptions for Hep B. What, if this bill passes and they're required to get more vaccines, what is, what's going to happen to them?
To if an employee did not get a hepatitis B vaccine? Well, that's, I'm not sure exactly, but the hepatitis B vaccine for employees is mainly to protect the employee, so I don't know what would happen in that case. Other, many other of these diseases we're talking about, though, are respiratory illnesses, so some amount of prevention and protection is provided by, you know, masks and things. But I don't know, even though there certainly is an element of patient protection, when clinicians and nurses have immunizations, that hepatitis B one is mainly to protect the employee, actually.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Nado?
I just wanted to point out that the bill, nor the amendment, would affect the exemption relating to hepatitis B vaccine.
Okay, thank you. Representative Rudnicki?
But it's vaccines in general, I guess, is also a concern because there are exemptions in the medical field for, for these employees. And, you know, basically, what's going to happen if they're refusing still? I guess that, that's what it comes down to, is what's going to happen to them if they continue to refuse? And in most cases, I would assume that they're going to lose their jobs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Harvey McPherson, and I can respond on behalf of Northern Light Health. What's important to know first is the definition of a healthcare facility in the CDC rule that would be impacted. So the designated healthcare facilities are licensed nursing facilities, residential care facilities, intermediate care facilities for the mentally retarded, multi-level healthcare facilities, hospitals, or home health agency. For Northern Light Health, we have 299 employees who are, have claimed exemption from vaccines. Our internal system is not able to differentiate religious, philosophical, or medical exemption, but the staff that have looked into this believe that the vast majority are religious or philosophical. So with a two-year timeframe to phase in this statute, if that's the direction that you go, we would certainly work with all of the employees who have religious and philosophical exemptions to inform them about the new law, educate them about the new law, and provide to them at no cost the opportunity to be vaccinated, to be compliant with the new law. If there's an effective date in September of 2021 where employees are not in compliance, we would work to transition them to other employment opportunities that aren't impacted by the CDC rule. And ultimately, there may be employees who are displaced and seek other opportunities. For example, you know, federally qualified health centers aren't identified, although I would, they may choose to request that their employees be vaccinated. So there'll be some shifting in the market, but because it applies to all of these facilities by licensing category, you know, the nurses won't be able to go to the competing hospital, for example, to try and find a job.
Thank you very much. Representative Farnsworth. You have your hand up. You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Representative Fecto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, I wanted to just generally say my piece and then, and then be done with this. To, to quote 12-term Congressman Ron Paul in OBGYN, "Giving the government power to override parental decisions regarding vaccines will inevitably lead to further restrictions on liberty." After all, government, if government can override parental and personal healthcare decisions, then what area of our lives is off limit to government interference? Concerns about infection from the unvaccinated can be addressed by consistent application of the principles of private property and freedom of association. Instead of justifying new government intrusion in our lives, the vaccine debate provides more evidence of the need to restore respect for private property and individual liberty. In my own mind, this, this bill, excuse me, this bill overrides body autonomy. Philosophically, I would think that the members of this body, this is where our political bubbles, would intertwine, and we would be interested in preserving liberty. This bill targets a minority who has stated they do not consent to this intrusion. The verdict is still out on how our new Mainers feel about this. In the governor's welcome home campaign, we still do not understand how our Somali, Syrian, and Iraqi neighbors feel about this. And furthermore, when I raised my right hand when I joined the U.S. Army in 2006, I took an oath to defend the U.S. Constitution and protect this nation from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And with all due respect to the sponsor and to the medical professionals, I, I consider this bill to be an egregious constitutional attack. Thank you.
Representative Cornfield?
And I just want to say, I think as policymakers, sometimes we are always, well, I think all the time we're balancing individual right against greater good. And I think as policymakers, sometimes we have to come down on the side of greater good. So I'll be supporting this bill.
Representative Farnsworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this case, I think the enemy is disease. There's no question about that. And while we have found that the methods for dealing with that are somewhat imperfect, nonetheless, we have been able to be reasonably successful over the generations to try and develop some management of the massive diseases that we've had in the past. As I've said before, I grew up in an era when polio was running rampant, and it was very frightening. My brother had measles, and our house was quarantined with a big red sign on the front door. The shades were pulled for fear of any kind of damage to vision, and the visiting nurse, we had county nurses where I grew up, visited every day in order to monitor the progress of that individual. It was serious business, very serious business. And yes, we've made significant progress in terms of trying to control, but we still are having, as we can see nationally, little pop, outbursts occurring pretty consistently now across the country. Because whether we like it or not, viruses and germs can mutate, and it can be very, very tricky in order to be able to maintain the level of immunity required in order to make sure that we don't have a major outbreak that takes out thousands of people. So my feeling is that while the system is imperfect, it's the best thing we have, and I think we need to make sure that it is applied consistently across our state.
Representative Drinkwater?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a lively debate, a lot of testimonies over a lot of time. You know, I come from a family that absolutely believes in vaccination. I lost an uncle with tuberculosis at the age of 31, when there was no cure. So we, as a society, we've come a long ways. When I went to school, there was probably five vaccinations you needed. Today, there's, before you even reach kindergarten, there's a tremendous amount of vaccinations. We've heard testimony to say that we're somewhere between 92 and 95 percent. I don't think we'll ever get to 100 percent, worthy goal, but I don't think we'll ever see it. We've heard testimony from legal that the state has police power in the event of an outbreak, and it can be used anytime by the governor. And we witnessed it during the Ebola vaccination with an old nurse, our own nurse from the state of Maine. We, so what we're talking about is removing the religious exemption. Now, we heard a tremendous amount of testimony about medical exemptions. Some doctors said, oh, it's easy to get medical exemptions. I give them, you know, quite freely. We heard a lot of parents say, well, the doctor said I wasn't eligible for medical exemptions. So what we're talking about here is just removing religious exemptions and perhaps letting those people over to medical exemptions and see what the medical community says about it. So in my way of thinking, we are violating the civil rights of that 5% to 6%. And we've heard testimony here on another bill about civil rights, and we all believe in civil rights. I don't think that we should be squeezing the civil rights of the religious community. Therefore, I'm going to oppose this bill. Thank you.
Representative Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments of my fellow colleagues on the committee, Representative Fecto, Representative Drinkwater. At the same time, there, a notion that's been prominent in American philosophy, government, is that of John Locke and social contract. And, and that we all recognize that we have a common interest that we're trying to achieve for the greater good. And in this particular case, I think the vaccination and where we're moving with this particular bill trumps the individual argument that somebody has a right to jeopardize a larger number of people because of that individual right. And in particular, when we talk about public school systems or, or attending educational systems, I think that social contract takes on even a greater importance. So I'm going to support this bill because I do think it's in keeping with the fact that we're moving in a direction to protect a common good and a, and created environment for all our children and for our families to feel protected against diseases that comment, that Representative Farnsworth already pointed out, at one point were frightening and potentially fatal, that we've now moved, because of advances in science, to be able to control and make sure that we could overcome those. So I'm, I appreciate the fact that Representative Tipping brought the bill forward. I appreciate the fact that this committee has worked exceptionally hard on this bill, and I intend to support the amended version.
Senator Puglia?
Can, can one of my colleagues that supports this bill explain to me how we are not putting kids more at risk by requiring all students to be vaccinated when the evidence presented by medical professionals shows that immunocompromised kids are more at risk from those who are just recently vaccinated, who have shedding of, of that vaccine?
I invite somebody from the medical profession to come and address that question.
Hello, committee. My name is Dr. Laura Blaisdell. I'm DMPH, working with Intermed Pediatrics. I'm a practicing pediatrician, infectious disease researcher, a vaccine hesitancy researcher, and I'd like to address your question of viral shedding. It has been suggested that vaccination causes viral shedding, and the outbreaks that we're currently seeing are the result of vaccine viral shedding. There are several very good bodies of literature that demonstrate that shedding that occurs after certain vaccinations can occur. The shedding of that vaccine, not the wild-type disease, not wild-type measles, not wild-type chickenpox, but the attenuated virus that can be shed, is only exceedingly rarely transmitted between an vaccinated individual and a healthy immunoh, immunologically healthy individual. By way of factors, we're talking three or four times it's been documented in 55 million doses. And when that individual did contract the disease, say chickenpox, the difference visually in chickenpox between 300 pox marks across a child's back is four or five pox marks across that child's back, and they do not have a severe virulent disease. It has never been documented in transmission in measles, mumps, rubella, which is the only other vaccine required by this law that could possibly theoretically demonstrate viral shedding. The other important, the other important aspect that I think has been blown out of proportion in this argument is that doctors do recommend that people who have, living in community, in close contact with immunocompromised individuals, for instance, my patient's father who had a liver transplant, should not receive the vaccine. My patient should not receive the vaccine because an immunocompromised patient is at risk of contracting that disease, that, that virus, that vaccine attenuated virus from the vaccinated child. In an immunocompromised patient, the visual of four or five pox marks on the back looks exceedingly different, and it looks different because, specifically because they are immunocompromised. So the risk of those individuals is quite high, and they could possibly lose their transplant, and they need to be hospitalized after they've been exposed to that. So yes, there are times that we do recommend that people stay away from people who, or people who are near immunocompromised, people are immunocompromised. But to be clear, the outbreaks that we're seeing currently are not a result of viral shedding from vaccinations.
What are they a result of?
Decreased community immunity.
Because the person who had a disease in Maine, according to the information from CDC, had already received the vaccine?
Which case are you speaking?
It's buried in here somewhere, the data that they gave us.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to speak to that. I was going to speak to the, the viral shedding, but perhaps Dr. Losi?
Do people who are vaccinated contract the diseases, ever?
For which vaccine?
Any of them that were requiring people to get.
Not for polio, not for MMR typically, not for HIB, not for pneumococcal, not for Hep B, not for Hep A, not, and sometimes for influenza, not for tetanus, not for diphtheria, and sometimes for pertussis.
So yes, sometimes is your answer?
Rarely in occasional diseases, yes.
Thanks.
Larry, would you like to say?
Yeah.
Is there, sorry.
My name's Larry Losi. I'm a pediatrician practicing in Brunswick for 40 years, and I'm a member of the Maine Vaccine Board and all that stuff. Anyway, the, none of the vaccines are entirely perfect. About 30% of the people getting measles, in one study that I saw, have been immunized. However, 95% of the people have been immunized, so it's much lower risk. The outbreaks that we're seeing currently in Clark County, Washington, and Queens, New York, we can find out and tell you who brought that measles into the United States. There are several countries that have much lower rates. Measles has become recurrent, and we can identify people who bring it into a community, susceptible people in contact with them can then get it. And vaccine hesitants tend to be congregating together, be together, and provide a lot more opportunity to spread the virus.
Senator Puglia?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to ask a follow-up. We just heard from Ms. Blaisdell that nobody that gets the MMR vaccine has contracted the disease. Is MMR the one that covers mumps? I'm not a doctor.
Yeah, measles, mumps, and rubella.
According to this CDC report from 2017, main surveillance report from the Maine CDC, one diagnosis of measles, that individual was not vaccinated. 100% of the cases had an epidemic, epidemiologic link to another measles case. Okay, so that person was not vaccinated. But the mumps case, one diagnosis, that person was vaccinated, according to this information from CDC. So can people that have been vaccinated contract these diseases?
And I, I wish I could have some time to talk with Laura because I think that she answered a question that was different than what you thought you asked. Because yes, you can get measles after getting the measles vaccine, but it's over, well over 90% reduction in risk. All of the vaccines, there will be an occasional, your immune system might not have responded to it because you had a cold or producing chemical called interferon, a lot of different reasons, but we're looking at overwhelming protection, but not 100%.
It's just really bizarre to me that-
Senator, I'm going to-
No, I just have a question about this.
Okay.
Yeah. That the one case that we've had of mumps in the state of Maine, the person was vaccinated. So how, how can, how can we go out to the public? I'm asking for your medical opinion and say that what we're doing is for the greater good, when we have documented evidence that shows that this work that we're doing in the name of the greater good actually results in cases where individuals still contract the disease that we're trying to protect people from?
Yeah. And science is always evolving. We're seeing a number of college and, interestingly enough, NHL outbreaks of mumps in the last couple of years, and we're looking into what can be done to improve protection, whether it's waning immunity, some other factor, we don't know, but it's being worked on. I, I just know that I've never seen a case of mumps, except for my own, when I was a kid.
Doctor, that one person that developed mumps, what percentage of the overall population that have received the vaccine do you think that person represents?
You know, how many people have received mumps vaccine are susceptible to it? It's going to be well under 5%. That's pulling a number out of the air. I don't have that number in front of me, but the overwhelming majority will be protected.
Representative Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Doctor, for being here. So I have a couple of related questions. So to the, the mumps outbreaks and how that can be transmitted, can you explain to me how a ship of Navy individuals who are fully vaccinated and then some?
The military does have a reputation for that.
How do they continue to cycle mumps through that ship that is totally quarantined for the last three months out, out at sea? Can you explain that, please?
The short answer is no. I can't explain it. I can speculate that, I don't know what the military's status is for repeating mumps immunizations on admission. I know they get lots of shots, but I, I've never been a military physician, so I don't know which ones they are currently giving. It could also be that they have such intense exposure that raises their risk. Those are speculations.
Okay. Well, then, to shift to a different direction, the oncology wings, St. Jude's Hospital, they have very clear signs telling people if they've been recently vaccinated with certain vaccinations, they are not to come onto the wing or come into the hospital. There's nothing about the unvaccinated. Can you explain that?
And again, as, as Dr. Blaisdell's mentioned, it's a theoretical risk that they're trying to belt suspenders and a piece of rope to hold things up and just make absolutely sure no one is bringing that on. I mean, they're already saying, don't bring sick people in, but for live virus vaccines, and that's what we're talking about, and there are only a very few of them, measles, mumps, German measles, the rotavirus vaccine that we give to infants, one type, the nasal spray, influenza vaccine, those are live virus vaccines. We haven't used the oral polio vaccine in the U.S. for many years. That would, that would be the other one. There are a few other vaccines that we do not routinely use, such as yellow fever, that are live virus vaccines. But there is theoretical risk, and because they're patients, some of them are totally without any immune protection, they want to make extra special super sure that that's not going to be a risk.
Sure.
If they're so concerned about the risks of their patients, why do they not include the unvaccinated?
I, I don't know. And it would have to be because they're, they're also working very hard to keep anyone that is ill off premises, as in visitors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're not in a public hearing, so unless there's any more questions, we're going to resume our discussion.
This was in reference to the senator's question.
Okay, we've already heard from two people. We're going to hear, hear from one more, and then we're going to resume our committee discussion.
Great, thank you.
So the question originally was, Senator?
I believe that there was a couple of questions. One of them was if individuals who have received vaccination can contract the vaccine. And the other question was if individuals who have been recently vaccinated pose a health and safety risk to individuals who are immunocompromised.
So thank you, Senator. My name is Dr. Zach Mizony. I'm a family medicine physician, duly board certified in family medicine through the osteopathic and the allopathic boards. I practice in Bath. As to your question from contracting disease, I worked at the Bates Clinic in the 2016 outbreak for mumps, and there were eight cases that we saw. Of all the eight cases that were seen at that time, all of them were immunized. I checked the records personally. We did not have one case at that time for our unvaccinated students that contracted the disease. They were quarantined. I think Bates did an excellent job of trying to manage that. They worked extensively with the CDC, did a very good job of trying to provide education. But to your question, yes, it's absolutely possible, and it did happen, and I saw it personally at Bates. The second question, I think, was answered quite well by the oppositions that had come before me as far as shedding. That is a theoretical risk, but I can tell you that practically and what I saw personally, that it absolutely did happen for people who were vaccinated to be able to receive the very disease that they were vaccinated to be prevented from getting.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to address the committee and for the public that's out there to know what's been going on sort of behind the scenes. So I presented an amendment. I feel that we do not have all the facts. I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and I'm deeply disappointed that we're not doing our due diligence. We are targeting a minority, 5% of the student population. We're segregating and marginalizing them. This is a small group of our society. We're using coercive measures and threats to force people to comply or be expelled from school. So much for FAPE, Free and Appropriate Public Education. This is a civil rights issue, and I'm not okay with it. Are we okay with segregating kids? Are we okay with adding to the mental health crisis when we stigmatize them and remove them from school? Are we okay with violating people's bodily autonomy? This is not about vaccinations. This is about bad legislation, and I will not support it.
I thought long and hard about this. For a long time, I stood right over the middle on it. You know, I, I used to teach at a school that, where a lot of kids weren't vaccinated. But being a science guy, being a scientist, I had to look at the data, and I really feel like we've had ample time to look at all the testimony that's come before us. If there were questions that came up during the testimony, we could have requested the information we needed. the information we needed. I've looked at both sides on this issue and looked at the data and really looking for evidence, because that's who I am. I'm a science guy. And what I found is that the data is consistent. Immunization saves lives. It's clear. There, a particular report I've looked at, put out by the CDC about vaccines and problems with vaccination, has come up with a couple of statements I wanted to read to you. Quote, "Modern vaccines are among the greatest public health achievement in history, preventing thousands of illnesses and deaths each year in the United States alone." Multiple large reviews and studies have been conducted to evaluate the association between vaccination and death. The results have consistently been reassuring. Like vaccine viruses are attenuated, and that's not what I wanted to read, but I'll kind of summarize because it'll lot the conclusion on this study, and it's a good one. Vaccines are rigorously tested and monitored and are among the safest medical products in use. The evidence for the safety and effectiveness of vaccines routinely given to children and adults in the U.S. is overwhelmingly favorable. Drawing broad cause and effect conclusions between vaccination and death based on spontaneous reports, some of which might be anecdotal or secondhand, is not a scientifically valid practice. So I guess I would say, in conclusion of all the research I've done, is the safety of vaccinations and the herd health and the community health that result as, as a result of vaccinations far outweighs the problems caused by vaccinations. And to me, we have a responsibility as citizens to make sure that public health is, is solid and secure as much as possible, and that's why I'll be supporting this bill.